All right, it is six thirty. I do hereby call the Swisher City Council meeting to order on Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty four. Klein?
Here.
Meade?
Here.
Hojo?
Here.
Roder?
Here.
Stagg?
Here.
Yep. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Yes, sir. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Uh, public comment? Nobody online, I understand?
Yep.
And we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on the consent agenda? Uh, all in favor of the consent agenda? Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll do reports. We'll start with the sheriff, but keep Wednesday night stuff for the actual meeting. Do you have anything else that we need to know about?
I have nothing.
Uh, engineer is not here. The other than their, uh, memos. I thought Melissa was gonna be here, but I can, um, she did send me a list of what they've worked on. I can review it.
Okay.
Um, so this month, we've worked on a sewer project, sanitary storm and water installed on Howard. From Thursday second, water man has been installed on Third Street from Howard to Stubbs. Currently working on the utility installation at the Second Street intersection. Potential to begin paving in the next two weeks. The pavement striping slash signage. They're finalizing the plans and OPC. The pavement rehabilitation, the contractor is scheduled to be on site tomorrow. Swisher sixty subdivision, final site plan, plot review coordination with the developer's consultant, and that should be ready for P and Z next, is that next week? Next week?
Mm-hmm.
That's good. Uh, the Rawlston subdivision, they're doing a construction inspection. And one hundred and twentieth street rehab segments two, three, and four. They've come up with a resolution of fees with Johnson County. Uh, also with division streets, um, we will be at Johnson County on Wednesday for the first of two meetings with county to make their decision on backdating or not. So we are still on track to having information to council by the end of July, so the July twenty second meeting.
I got a question for the engineers since they're not here.
Sure.
There's a, there's a manhole that's, you know, on the Swisher Creek. It runs between like, it'd be like the, I'm trying to think of what it, my direction next to the the east, uh, east end of, uh, Ironside's property and then my brother-in-law's property, John Service X. There's a manhole that's probably only about, I'd say, four foot away from a dry creek. And when that, when we get heavy, heavy flooding or, you know, like a downpours and the creek comes out of its banks, I'm just wondering if they're gonna do something about it. If they're gonna put like riffraff around that manhole or what? Because I mean, it's only like, that manhole is from like me to Julie away from the creek right now, and that creek's only running this wide, you know, because dry as it is. I don't know if that hurts anything getting all that stormwater down into the, into the sanitary sewer. I guess I'm not an expert on that, so I don't know, but I, I know usually you have a manhole higher than any water can get into.
Back, uh, mine there before I put that new line through there.
Uh-huh.
One manhole is exposed to my creek. It washed, you can see the hole. They, nobody said anything about it, but they moved it when I put the new line in, but it was that way for, was it?
Yeah.
Water comes out of that, uh, what come over there?
Water comes out of that creek all the time. I mean, when we get some gully gushers or bad spring, that, that creek can flood way past where that manhole is. I would just think that they wouldn't want water run. Maybe they're gonna end up moving it, but I, I, I don't really know. But I mean, it's within like, I could say four feet of the creek right now.
Yeah, more than pass out of the.
Yeah, cuz that's, I, I wouldn't think you'd want a manhole running that foot or where you're gonna get water down into the storm sewer, into the sanitary sewer, but.
Sure, let's just make a note to check that one for rim elevation. We might need to put a riser on it, which definitely doesn't happen in, risers aren't that expensive to choose over.
Okay. Anything else with engineering that you're involved in? Yeah, I didn't know. Do you wanna go over these? I, I thought Melissa would be here, but maybe she got them over.
Yeah.
Uh.
Is that on the agenda or is that?
Yep, there was, yeah, both of them. Yeah, this is under, uh, six engineering reports. You'll see copies of these. Listen to the stuff she added this afternoon. Uh.
Can you go over it?
It, we're here. We're there.
We're already, yeah, this side.
Yeah, we're there. So we're looking at uh, the total portion of the project to be one point one million. If you guys remember, potentially ten percent, the city would have to pay back to the county. But if they backdate it, it would be less than ten percent. And then it's really just a portion because we're not moving an annex in the whole thing. So we are looking at a lot less than the four hundred and fifty thousand in ballpark two months ago when we started talking about this. So that's kind of what these memos are talking about. It's the final costs of what they came up with once the county finalized everything. So the county's numbers won't change. They're done, but they're a portion. So now at this point, you just have to figure out what is the percentage that we're gonna end up doing.
You say you're gonna find that out this coming?
Well, it's a two-meeting process with the county. So we have one on Wednesday and then one next week. You don't have to do it the next week. I'll be there. But yeah, they do a two-meeting process for all their stuff minimum. So we're still, that would give us plenty of time to do that on the agenda for the twenty second with their resolution. So we have final numbers. Which would be nice to know. Uh, any questions we could pass on to the engineers? Otherwise, we're still kind of in a holding pattern. Um, do you only have the blower stuff to cover?
Pretty much. I mean, the plants running fine, so it's pretty much just the blowers.
Perfect. We'll get to the blower stuff on eight in a second then.
Excellent.
Um, mayor reports, um, back on the eleventh, I met with Swisher Economic Alliance. On the eighteenth, I had a lead meeting. Uh, we did specifically talk about Senate File twenty-three eighty-five, which did change the law requirements for all municipalities must now offer a high bread or virtual option for all council and board meetings. We have been doing it since COVID. We're gonna continue to do it. Library has always done it. They will continue to do it. Um, Park and Rec has always done, they'll continue to do it. Mallory will now attend, um, planning and zoning to do theirs, to make sure we are in compliance. Um, the law does not say that we have to store them. It does not say that we oppose them. We will continue doing that as we always have. It wouldn't surprise me if they change that law in the future, but for right now, it's no longer optional. It will always be high bread or virtual option. So that will, but after budget meetings, this is the only one we're going putting out on Zoom, and we'll do that in January. Um, so that was a big change. The eighteenth, the parking committee also met. Nineteenth, I met with Parks and Rec. Uh, the first, Amanda and I walked through stuff. We have an item coming up later today. Um, on Sunday, I had a meeting with Farmers Market. FYI, they hit ten years next year, and they are planning to do some big stuff. And then we got an interesting email about, uh, the Iowa Supreme Court overturned a law that had been in existence for quite a while. Sidewalks within municipalities now are the liability of the municipality. So basically, if.
Really?
Yep. If somebody trips and falls on somebody's sidewalk because the sidewalk was broken, that person can now sue the city. Yeah. So this is a huge change to the law. It is what it is. We have to deal with it. Um, so Justin and I have already talked. He's going to go around town and figure out the how all the sidewalks look, and we will be bringing it to a future, a future council. We need to discuss how we want to deal with stuff. We can, and they did say this in the ruling, we can still require homeowners and business owners to do the maintenance. So let's say if there were a broken sidewalk outside my house, the city could come to me and say, you are required to fix your sidewalk. You know, we would say the timeframe, what we do for anything. If I fail to do it, the city would take care of it and bill it. That is still on the homeowner or property owner to pay for everything, but the city is not required to basically force people to do it because they could come back to the city. So, big law change. There will be more stuff coming, um, probably in August when Justin and I get through all of the sidewalk stuff, and then council will have to make a decision on how we're gonna change our ordinances. FYI, that was a fun event. Um, that's all I have. Any council reports?
I just have a question. I had a couple of people ask me when the next newsletter is due to come out.
Did you send it out today?
Um, I sent it out on.
Yesterday?
Yesterday, yesterday.
Okay, this was last week when they asked me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So maybe they just, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other reports? Any staff reports? I read your, I don't know, I just wanna touch base with Melissa there. I read what you had in your.
Oh, yeah, we, we talked about the budget mail.
I, so I kind of went over that, went that through to council, and then, um, the mayor went over those memos. But council member Klein had a question that maybe he could pose to you right now.
Right.
So it doesn't get lost in translation.
There's a manhole. It's, it's on Swisher Creek. It's, I, you don't know the property, but it's, um, just east of Mark Ironside's property and on my, it's actually on my brother-in-law's, which is John Service X. I don't know what the address is, but there's a manhole that's probably, I'd say probably four feet away from the creek. It's only like this wide right now. But when we get heavy rains and when we get like a bad spring, that creek gets really lot, lot higher than what it is right now. And I was just wondering if, if it's okay to have that manhole like get covered up with water like during a flood time? Or if the need, if, if the H R G, or not H R G, Dave Schmidt's planning on moving that at some point or whatever, but.
Is it a new manhole?
Yeah, it's a new manhole. Yeah.
They are sealed, and we do have, um, I mean, there's provisions for those to be in water claims. To be covered by floodwater.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that like we got a bunch of floodwater going down into our sanitary sewer. That wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt that, whatever.
So all our manholes are going in the existing location of the old manholes. We've just removed and replaced pretty much. Um, so these will be new. They have, you know, reconstruction, so they'll be sealed up a little bit better than it was before.
Okay, cuz there wasn't a manhole in the spot where it's in right now. It's a brand new one.
I'll have to look at it.
Okay, all right.
So you said it's on Service X?
Yeah, Johnny.
East end of Fifth Street.
Yeah, east end of Fifth Street, yeah.
It'd be seventy-five Fifth Street.
Yep. It's on our old map. There's one. There was one down there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, especially the line turns right there.
Yeah, just on the east side of Ironside, right? Well, it's actually, yeah, it's on the other property, but seventy-five, yeah. It's on Johnny's property, right. Yeah, there's one on our old map shown there. Really? Yep. I don't think it, I don't think you could see it before.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, we have, we've removed and replaced, I remember previously, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else you wanna add or are you good?
I think you said you went through.
I went through that list and the email, yep, this afternoon, so, yeah.
I really didn't have anything else, so, and then if there are any questions about the memos for Johnson County.
Okay, and then one on Wednesday. Any other? All right, um, moving on to seven, additional Wednesday night law enforcement to review the process. Did they send any details, book out or?
I guess, what do you, I don't, you know.
And you do most Wednesday nights, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have, yeah, we have, but.
Wasn't there?
Yeah, there's a report in there.
There's a report in there.
Yeah.
For May and June.
If anybody can't find it, wants to see it, I have a paper copy here too.
So like, you took like ten years.
Yeah, that, what you have there, yeah. Okay, did you see it then? I'm kind of wondering if I didn't get it in yours. So council head said they were gonna make a new decision now. What do you guys wanna do?
First off, how's it been going on your guys' side?
Actually, it's been going really well. They, I mean, you can probably tell you better, but they're just a bit busy. I think the crowd has actually changed quite a bit too. It's a little calmer.
Uh, still some alcohol issues, underage stuff, uh, big IDs, misuse of IDs. Some of the kids that have been a problem don't come around here, man, so that's.
Good.
But, and there are some that still do, but, yeah. It's been consistent.
I really haven't heard the complaints. Have you gotten any complaints or requests? I would call it to be, I have, but it's good.
Do you guys ever see a time when there, we will not need extra patrol? I mean, we, we're gonna bring it up every three months and decide on it, but I mean, what, what would it ever take for us not to have extra patrol?
From the perspective of the type of, the type of event it is and how many people it does, I don't, I, I think that you kind of put yourself in a position where it's always gonna be something necessary. Because I don't think I paid them to wear alcohol, drink, or build, or whatnot. She always gonna have that mix of issues. But maybe, I guess it just kind of comes down to how you guys feel about how your health is out, how you guys feel about.
What's your guys' schedule look like through the December?
Uh, as of right now, uh, we do plan on staying open, uh, year round, uh, barring any weather-related events. If there's a heat advisory on a Wednesday in Johnson County, we will cancel. Otherwise, we plan on being open.
I forget, do you guys close over the holiday season, or do you stay open still?
Depends on how the Wednesdays and Thursdays fall on the calendar. Uh, we closed July fourth, uh, but we were open July third. So if it's Christmas Day, Thanksgiving Day.
Christmas Day holds on a Wednesday.
We'll close, you know?
Yeah.
Depends on the calendar.
So Christmas and New Year's Day will both fall on a Wednesday this year.
Yes, we wouldn't be open on Christmas Day. New Year's Day. Potentially.
And we have been reviewing it every three months. You guys don't have to. I mean, you could say, let's review it beginning of December. Or Thanksgiving.
Looks like the stats all been pretty consistent, haven't they, on a new Wednesday? There's no Peaches to Valleys much, is there? Doesn't look like it.
When it says bar checks, does that account for the dance more in this room?
We do all of them.
Both of them.
And, uh, you have Agent.
Agent, yeah.
So we do it every three months?
Yeah, kind of, cuz we were seeing how it was gonna go, but you don't have to do every three months.
I think we also did three months this time because I think you obviously said you didn't know your summer schedule with the heat or whatnot. So that's why we.
Obviously, it's previously always been really hot.
Yeah.
And now the weather fluctuates so much that it doesn't make sense for us to close.
Yeah.
Seventy degrees.
Motion to keep the one patrol car, um, will revisit again at the first December meeting?
Sounds good.
Sure.
Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion ends. Thanks. We'll keep seeing you guys on those meetings.
All right, thanks for being, we'll go to the tower.
I'm good. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, the WWTP blower number one, go for it.
Um, I provided the quote to council, um, to repair.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, to repair the, we basically just have to replace the EFD. That drive is shot and it just needs replaced, so. So that quote is four, and, um, that's the only thing keeping blower number one from running, so we'll get that fixed, we'll be back up and going normal.
Is this the same pump from like the seven hundred eighty-eight dollar thing that was on our claim support, or is that?
Correct, that'd be for the same trip, yeah, when they came and spent the money. Yep, yep, that's all the same thing.
Question? Anyone want a motion?
Motion to.
Second.
Motion of them, okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Curious, thank you. Thank you. All right, number nine, Cassett Park Trees. Amanda was kind enough to walk around with me. If you guys remember, when we put her on Parks and Rec, she has a ton of knowledge about trees. Um, brought these two trees to my attention. I'll let her explain what she means.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I've had a good look around of all the trees in the parks recently, and there are two main hazard trees in Cassett Park that are really of concern and liability for the city. One of them is a maple near the ballpark fence line, and it has widow makers in it. So enough of them at enough degree, being an angle in which any high winds or even a, it's at that angle in which a kid can reach on it and pull it on it as well, and it has enough weight that if it falls down, it will take more branches with it. Um, so that was a really big concern I wanted to bring attention, and then there's an ash tree that is located near the park concession stands, and without proper removal, my prediction is it will land on those concession stands within the next two years, if not sooner, um, causing more finances for the city. Uh, I think it'd be a good idea to try to prevent in all cases, seriously, so.
The one with the leaves on it, that's the maple, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Looks like it got wind damage. How long, how long has it been that way?
I.
You may know?
I think it's from the derecho.
Right.
It's been that way for a while.
It probably should have been removed after the derecho, and it wasn't.
It wasn't.
It's been going all the time, it looks like.
So that's, that's great that it hasn't moved for that long. I still get worried on the factor of kids.
The ash tree, is that, that is part of the removal listing?
I don't, I don't think that one's on the list.
It's not on the list?
I don't, I don't think that one was on the list of the eighteen trees where they had thrown in. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I don't, I think it was all the other ones, and I don't know if that one's really been on there.
Where are we at on that? Just, do we know, did we gotten through their all?
We have, not from what I remember.
Okay, so there's still.
There's still six or seven of them at the park.
Yeah.
We're starting. They got a whole new list now.
Yeah, we can't find anymore.
Yeah.
Social view.
The DNR was going to come back and. Do again?
Yeah. Did they give you a timeframe at all?
They didn't. She just, she said they're booked, but because they've already done Swisher and they missed some, they would make sure to come back and do it again sometime this summer. She would let me know.
The one that she saw, I know that was the one by Kirk's prop, or right up by Kirk's, it was kind of over Kirk's driveway. And he's had, he was out there one day and talking to me and said he, he had picked up one branch off his driveway. Um, and that was, I talked to him a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, Amanda's big concern is, um, it's kind of on a hill and the way the branches are leaning. It is leaning towards the bathrooms, which means if it falls, it's gonna hit the building and then have the cost of the.
I mean, I think we can all say it's a dead tree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the painful part is the removal cost.
Until we alleviate some pain, I looked at the other ashes there. That is the highest priority of ash at the park in general, in my opinion.
You should be reading out a book by now, aren't you, for a suit? How many, how many more ash are there?
On the park, about six to seven.
Looks like it's a sale of them years ago, huh?
Luckily, um, based on the conditions of the other ones, they can survive some time, yeah. They have enough help and canopy and.
Well, there were quite a few. They, they have been treated.
Mm-hmm, and you can, and you can kind of tell, maybe those are the ones that are being treated right now. So that'll also help space out your timeline of removals.
So I guess, I think all these trees need to be removed. Can we combine them all in bid and get?
We need to.
When we do the social view. I mean, these are all immediate threats to our population. I don't know where we're gonna find in the budget, but we're gonna have to find it somewhere because this is huge hazards. Uh, so I think when we do the ones on social review, this gets included in the bid and we do it all at once. So, I mean, the sad part of it, we can't do it till what, after September?
October.
October one.
But we could go out for bid now to figure out how much it's gonna cost.
Absolutely.
So that'll give us a little bit of time to talk about finances.
But yeah, I think that, I mean, that's the only problem is we do have fundays coming up when we have to alter an end.
The park is being packed.
That, so. Uh, I don't know.
Is it all turned the same weekend or is it different?
Same weekend, this is.
Is it back? Is it in the same weekend, huh?
So do you need a motion?
Uh, yeah, I think we need a motion to go out for bid.
Motion plays, these two trees along with the Swisher View Drive trees.
How many, how many trees up on Swisher View Drive you talked about? You talking about that whole line of them up there?
Uh-huh.
Or, hold on, is that top right?
Six, wasn't there eleven?
I was like, wow.
I would say there was eleven. It was in your family.
It was in the front row.
It was.
That's, that's on the, like, damn about the property east corner, that's up there, that's got a wall in the line, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few.
I think there was a, Tim had prepared a map and, I think I wanna say it was like eleven.
Quite a few, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think going out for bid now so we can see cost is.
Plus the additional stump on the north side of Hilltop, if it needs to be ground.
Uh, didn't he grind? Was that the one you were talking about, the ground a couple of?
That's a different one.
That's it. All right, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Have you guys ever, um, thought about like seeing if anybody would, like a private owner would wanna take them down and use the wood or anything like that?
Not necessarily, they have insurance.
With running some liability, they have to have insurance to work up to the park. Other discussion? All those in favor of going out for bid?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll see what comes back. Um, that's all we needed, Amanda. You're welcome to stick around if you have anything.
We're getting three bids on the trees, right?
Yeah, we get three bids for something. Yep. All right, uh, event permit for the Swisher Men's Cloud Car Show. It takes place on September seventh. Great event. They do it every year, close on the streets.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Curious. Uh, number eleven, review Moeen Street right of ways. Uh, number eleven, review mowing street right of ways, this is what yours, Daryl.
I've got a concern, as you know, about the, the weeds and brush in the ditches. Our ordinance looks like it's geared to suburban, and it talks about ditches, in suburban area you don't have ditches, you can mow right to the road. Since we've been annexing land in the rural area, mostly rural, it's just, you can't mow. No, uh, you can get, you can get the top part, but to get the whole, the fence line, there's a lot of you can't do, and I see on Fishers, they tried to do it, it's been this weekend, it's like, when they bury it, you know?
I don't know if they buried a skid loader or many mowers, but.
But that's a, but anyway.
Right behind my house, this is a property as well.
Yeah, and a lot of cities, I mean, I shouldn't say a lot, but I know several cities, what they do is, if, like going on one hundred and twenty street, right along the road, you got weeds, couple feet high. All you need to do is, is, like I mentioned last week, and I know we can't afford it now, but we need a tractor with a disc mower that hangs out to the side, get eight footer, and just, I went on Shuigal, Shuigal done it, it looks nice, they mowed from the edge of the road, they're back eight foot in there, it looks real nice, you can't mow a lot of those ditches. Even on Fishers, on Fishers, they tried it, they didn't have much luck, and there's really no way to mow them because they're so steep. I got problem making the, uh, landowners require them to mow from their fence line to the road because a lot of them don't have the equipment to go in that steep of hills, and I just, uh, I guess I don't want, either we gotta change the ordinance to take into consideration the rural ditches because they are so much different than your suburban, and all our ordinances are here to suburban, for the most part.
So what about making a vendome to this for properties that are still zoned ag, say they're responsible for five, six foot from the edge of the street onto the ditch?
But it's gonna be different on every ditch though, and whether to be able to mow it.
Yeah.
I mean, whether the, you know, you know what I'm saying, like if a ditch goes like this, something like this.
You can mow right up to the road.
You can ride it.
Equipment.
I was gonna say, so, in theory though, on the west side of Swisher View, there's some steep ditches as well. Those homeowners, they don't have to maintain them, because they all do.
If you think, if they mow them, they're not that, if they're mowed, they, they can mow them, a lot of you can't mow, I can get a deal.
Fishers also don't mow them because they are never at that, they're not a homeowner, they own the land.
I would caution council that if they make exceptions, we will run into a lot of people in town who will stop mowing and say, I can't mow, that's too steep. And that is going to open a large can of worms, as Cody was saying, they can rent equipment, they can hire a company.
But not if it's owned ag, you just leave a, leave the exception for zone ag. If they rezoned it as commercial, like whatever, and they don't do anything on it, I'm sorry, that's on commercial, it's residential, either or, now you've got plans for whatever, you can make that exception for ag zoned land.
Who's in that just outside of town?
Everything west of Swisher.
Oh, east too, is that?
Yeah, east and, east and west, right.
Yeah, we, we always, the city Swisher always does, always mow those ditches.
And so who would be mowing it if there was, if there wasn't houses over there, who would have mowed it in years past?
Nobody, the town mowed it.
That's what I'm saying, the town mowed it.
Yeah, they always did. And I don't know, for some reason we got rid of the tractor and the mower, and now.
You know what, that mower's gone, move on. Stop bringing it up, we bring it up every meeting, I'm tired of it.
Well, they don't listen.
You know why?
What?
I'm tired of listening to you, stop harping on something that has already happened. It was two years ago, it was a previous council, this council didn't make that decision.
I didn't say they did, I didn't say they did.
Stop bringing it to them.
I can just, just as bad as you can, pretty soon here, but I'm just saying, that's the only thing we can do it with, if we're gonna mow it, if we want to mow it.
How have we, how have we mowed in the last year, Justin? Because we don't have it, we don't have it.
We've been mowing, we've been mowing the ditches east and west of town with a zero turn, because there's nothing that's too steep that we can't mow with a zero turn.
Nothing out there?
Like we just can't mow what is.
We've mowed all that, we've been mowing all that to Green Castle on the south side.
One division.
One division, with our zero turn mower for the last two, since I've been here.
All the way, all the way to the fence?
Pretty close, yes. Well, pretty, pretty close to that field.
That fence? How can, how can we just mow it now then?
Because we sent letters to the owners.
We sent letters out.
I know, but I.
Why are we changing it, is what I got to say.
Because it wasn't something that we should have been doing according to our ordinance.
But my contention is the ordinance is related to suburban areas.
Yeah, when that ordinance was made, it was probably, we probably never had, I, I, I'm, I'm just guessing that when that ordinance was made, that, that the city was never out that far, it was all just stopped basically at Swisher Drive.
That's amazing.
Or, you know, or, or, or close to that, like right where the post office is. Now you're talking, you're going, you got housing developments going west, it's going into agriculture, you got, and you know, if, um, what was it, Shealy and Deegan decide to do anything out there, there, there's gonna be ditches in front of that too. I, I don't know if they are gonna or whatever, I'm just saying, that's, that's the difference, is when, when that ordinance was made, it was, our town basically stopped at Swisher Park Road there and Swisher D Drive, and now you got developments that are going all over the place, I mean, not all, you know.
That makes a lot of sense.
Right, because they, because any homeowner back then could, could mow their ditch, I mean, just because Mike's ditch was up to the road or whatever, I mean, it wasn't nothing major like these are out here.
Well, I don't care what you do, that's my opinion. I just don't think it's, it's right, we're required to do it, and I think it's, uh, Justin says he mows those ditch, I'll take his word for it, but.
What's council want to do?
I mean, I guess my issue, because I do have thought up to like Fishers, I'll back, is if we place this, change the ordinance all back behind there, like, is it me and all of my neighbors, we just have to deal with it now when all their weeds and stuff get six foot tall throughout the summer? I mean, yesterday they went in and cleaned it up, because now, it's, I mean, it's within city limits. I mean, they still got a twenty foot tall pile of trees back there for three months, but otherwise, that never gets maintained.
What are you talking about, to, to go in the west or the south?
The, the north side of the, that lot.
Technically, you don't have to maintain the fence.
And then the other thing you're gonna get into too, like, is if somebody is not taking care of it, say, it's, say we put it on the homeowner's responsibility to, or developer's responsibility to mow it, what if they're not mowing it and the weeds are getting way high and somebody gets into an accident because they didn't see past these weeds or what, you know, you know how to get blind spots and stuff, I mean, then who's gonna fill? I'm not saying that could happen, but I'm, I'm not gonna happen, but it could, because if you let it get high enough, you got blind spots. So this all kind of came up last year with Chris and, and Tanya talking about the, um, Fisher, on Swisher View, the hill, when Cody brought to us that, you know, the weeds are getting taller, you know, the weeds are getting tall over the signs. And we went in there and we did it, and then we build them, but we're not, you know, but then they're basically saying, well, we're not billing anybody else that we're doing stuff for. I mean, there's a, there was a, a difference therein extended to the city, just like the guys out on Division, we're billing these guys, we're not billing these guys. So, how is that technically fair if you're, you're contradicting yourself? And the reason that we haven't, that we've never mowed any of the ditches with the tractors, because when I got here, the PTO shaft on the tractor was already bent and it wasn't used for, I don't know, a long time before I got here, I guess, is what they told me.
On the mow?
Yeah.
Do I have to have a mow?
The PTO shaft of the, the tractor, yeah, so, um, we've always, since I've been here, everything that we've mowed on the highway even has all been done with a zero turn. Or John Gear Rider, also.
How'd you, how'd you come up with Swisher View last year? Did you just use weeders?
We needed that, yeah.
Talking Swisher D, like going up the hill?
Because the weeds were like.
Well, that one, that one we weededed more, I think, I mean, we could have driven our mower down in there, I think, once you get down there, it's flat enough, but there's so many, there's different trees growing in there, so you wouldn't be able to get around very well, so it was just easier to weedede it.
We don't have anything against burning.
No, and actually the fire department, um, offers that service, you can hire them and burn your ditches.
So there's nothing saying that these people with these ditches can't spray the whole ditch, kill it, and just do a controlled burn on it once, twice a year, that can, counts as mowing.
Yeah, and they are always looking for people who wanna burn ditches.
Actually, what I proposed to Fishers to do is look into spraying it and burning it, and.
Trugs just talked to Dylan, I wasn't there, but he had talked to Dylan, he got some attachment that he wanted to do this ditch out here himself, he said, um, for, I don't know if it's for a skid loader or what, but he got some ditch mowing attachment for his property.
He's got a, a world roll front of his skid loader.
Okay.
Technically, these guys could just spray these ditches and control burn them once, twice a year.
But the point that, uh, so like if there was not Fishers development there, and there was not, um, Ralston's development going there, and there was not these developments out here, who would be mowing those ditches?
Were those in the maintenance agreement with Johnson County?
The county agreement is that we maintain the north side of Division through town. So, Division, Division along here, yeah, um, and out the city limits. Just through town.
Like out to the.
Green Castle to Maric. Oh, already for Green Castle. The north side, yeah, which, which we've been doing, um, both the north and the south sides on the, outside of the town. Except for, uh, you know, through town, people do their own yards, up to the street, uh, that guy that's across from where Allen comes out on Division, that, he does his own on the north side, he always has. Basically from there down to Swisher View, he's always done, is on the post office, has always done their own. We've done, like, right where Allen comes out on, on Division, those condos, or zero lots, whatever you wanna call them, we've done right around those and around the sign, and then all the way out to Green Castle on the south side. And we've always done a cross on Division, which is now the developments property. And then start again at Laura's, or just east of Laura's at that driveway basically, and go all the way down to the fire station, down to Maric basically, as far as we can go on the north side and the south side.
So basically, if the south side weren't part of the city, it would have to go back to the county, and the county would decide if they're gonna put in or.
The county's definitely got powers to do it. Without any, without any problem.
Right, but they, they won't touch any city property though. They would never come out here and do this.
Did you just say it'd be up to the county?
If they were not part of the city, it would go back to the county, and the county would decide with the agreement, who would have to maintain it, but since it's part of the city, they won't touch it.
Essentially, we're talking about two condo owners, Fishers, Lindeman has a chunk there, then who's out here on the side of town?
Those are Doyle Trust, the first one, they're all the trust, they're now.
So it's like five properties.
Yeah, I don't know.
Which Lindeman's and Fishers are more than one of the, I'm sure, work with us, we know Fishers are.
I talked to Richard, he said.
That's what I was just, I don't remember.
Especially, it was just.
I think it was like a lot, well.
Twice a year.
Yeah.
I mean, if we leave it alone and they have the option to burn it twice a year or something.
Yeah, we don't have anything that says they can't burn it.
Right.
And the fire department's putting up their ditches.
There is no burn vans in Swisher, is there, anywhere?
Um, just, uh, on.
Dirt.
Wind.
Well, yeah, but I mean, like, I can burn grass in my yard, or leaves in my yard at any time.
Not if the state declares droughts in the county, then.
Well, yeah. Then we can't, but.
But no, other than that, um.
Nine, ten letters went to property owners?
Some of those were in town.
Yeah, a couple.
It's just the one on Swisher Field on the other side. Okay. But I think, they're all along, these are the long Division Street and Swisher View.
Yeah, but some are Swisher View East. Not West.
No, because there was one on West. I'm not including any of those.
Okay.
These are all having to do with notification about come August first.
So each ten properties that it affects.
Be responsible.
Where's that list at, do you have it in here?
It was in a previous packet, it was probably in, in the June, the end of June packet. All those letters would have been in there. Is that the fire department's looking to burn ditches?
Absolutely. They use it for training, they, they offer out the swishers.
Training? It's like what, like?
So basic, basically, um, you do pay a fee for your ditch, but they, they use it as training hours then for renovation stuff, because they need so many hours of that kind of stuff. So they are always looking for more ditches to work in?
Why would they charge if they're using it for training purposes?
Um, I think it's, it's not very much from what I understand, it's mostly just for the cost of.
Right there.
Probably.
What, and it would be less fuel?
I don't know, you'd have to talk to the chief.
Do they come out killing grass, huh?
You'd have to talk to the chief, I'd love to.
Otherwise, you, you'd have only one burning a year, and that'd be in the fall, you could never cut it in spring, springtime, or summer, you wouldn't burn.
What's council want to do?
Well, I've said my say, so I'll leave where it's at to, you know how it feels. I'll go along with it, whatever the majority wants to do, I.
You can make a motion.
Huh?
You can make a motion.
Nope.
Anyone else wanna make a motion, or we can move on?
The, the only concern I have, I, and I, I'm not voting, I mean, I'm not saying either way, I'm, I'm concerned about when you leave it up to, I know, I know Gil and Rich know what the hell they're doing or whatever, but I'm leery about when you leave it up to a homeowner, like, all of a sudden they try something that they shouldn't be doing to, to mow a ditch, you know, I mean, I know Gil and Rich and know what they're doing and everything, but that doesn't mean like some, somebody that owns the condo is gonna, we're gonna tell them that they gotta mow the ditch and they're gonna go out there with something that they shouldn't be doing it with and get hurt. I mean, yeah, you can say, yeah, it's their fault, blah, 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 but you're still gonna feel guilty that.
Don't you run into that, Mary, don't you guys have some properties that move steep hills, like their backyards?
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
No, a steep backyard is not, is, is a lot different than a ditch. Steep backyard goes like this, you can mow a steep backyard, a ditch is like this, some of those ditches are, that's, that's my only concern is, I would hate to see, I would hate to see a homeowner get hurt doing, you know, doing something they shouldn't be doing or not trained to do, that's my concern.
Question, these notifications that are going out?
They, they went out.
They went out, okay, has any of the property owners, residents, or whatever gotten back?
Yeah, um.
And inquired as far as what the actual code says?
Well, they got, they got nailed to codes, the code was, was in there as well, so, um.
Cause I'm reading on here too, uh, fifty-two oh one says weeds and noxious growths must be destroyed or cut.
Yeah.
Which when we're talking about burning and that kind of stuff, so they have lots. You know, and if they understand what that is in the current code, then I, myself, I don't, I don't think that we would really need to change something anymore. And, and if they want clarification on that, I think that they could get a hold of City Hall and ask, could you clarify exactly what can be done, and we could provide them options.
Yeah, so Casinas, um, came in, he stepped in, he was fine with it, he just, yeah, had some questions.
Okay.
Um, I think it was the Fisher, yeah, Fisher came in. Um, we visited for quite a while, and he had some questions, we just, I mean, we visited about it.
Um, we visited for quite a while, and he had some questions, we just, I mean, we visited about it. I think that's the one that I ever got any contact about.
That's kinda what I was just wondering, if, if we've had anything back from, if they're actually asking certain specifics, you know, what can I do to?
Should, should, you put this, uh, the minor city code where it says, if the slope is too steep based, contact City Hall for those steps?
I didn't put that on there.
You put that in there.
Me.
What other steps do we have for?
So Justin can go out and explain that you can burn, and you can use weed eater, and give them options they probably haven't thought of, yeah.
And one of the reasons that I, that I even brought this up was because we're, just, you know, part of my job is obviously to try and save money from the city, I mean, we're spending a lot of man hours mowing on something that we shouldn't even have been mowing in the first place, I mean, now, you know, with it being extended, and, and like I said, with, with doing this versus doing that, and, well, should we be doing this for this person and, and not this person, I mean, mowing these ditches takes a long time, I mean, it takes a long time, even if you were in a tractor with, you know, another mower, I mean, I used to mow the ditches in Tiffin with one of those, and I, it was two or three days out there, obviously, this isn't, you know, as much roadway as, as that, but, um, I mean, it's a lot of man hours, and it takes up a lot more time when we could be, you know, we have a lot of other stuff to do as well, especially with all the projects going on in town.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Uh, I'm sorry, I mean, it is, it is, but, um.
I keep throwing projects at him, so, he has plenty to do.
Yeah, uh, just between, between the, I don't know, it's just something that we're, you know, we bet, they've already been doing, like you said, but technically, I mean, looking at our stuff and how it is for other property owners, we shouldn't have been doing it.
All right, so it sounds like we've kinda discussed, does anyone wanna make a motion at all? Okay, and we will move on to number twelve. Uh, consideration of resolution forty-five of twenty twenty-four, appointing Emily Carlson to the Swisher Community Fund Board of Trustees. Um, so as you remember, we are trying to get five people onto that board so we can actually start voting, we had another person turn in an application today. Too late to get on the agenda, they will be on the next agenda, so we are out there looking for people. People are starting to apply.
How long's this?
They're, they're three-year appointments.
Like, why don't we appoint them, or?
Um, I think, well, we generally do to end a calendar year, so it'd be really great.
Well, no, I actually changed it.
Yeah, the, well, when I looked back in notes from when there was an active, it was, um, June thirtieth. So this is gonna go July first for three years, yeah, and then, you know, if, if we get, and, and some of the, I guess, guidelines of the, the, um, I guess bylaws, for lack of a better word, um, it talks about initial terms should be staggered, so, and no more than three can be expiring in one year. So once we get to three at a full three years, then the other two, so the last two that get appointed are gonna be shorter terms. Obviously, a one year and a two year, so that way, or, or both in the same year, so that way, yeah.
What is, what is the goal of this committee?
There is money that nobody can touch except the committee, and the committee does not exist, so we have money, um, that could be spent on city unification, that it would be nice if we could spend.
How much money is it?
A lot.
Thirty, thirty-one, most likely.
It's like thirty-some thousand dollars.
But that, that's the Johnson County money, and then there's some that is held locally.
In a different account.
Yeah, so.
So it'd be nice if we had a board that could do something.
So that board reports to the council?
Um, well, it's kinda like Parks and Rec where you guys appoint, and they maintain it.
It's really not, because Parks and Rec is an actual board that is established by city code, and this is kind of what, what we refer to as ad hoc committees. It's not, it's not under the jurisdiction of the council, it's more under the jurisdiction of that Johnson County Community Fund. Um, but in that agreement with the Johnson County Community Fund, that's where the council entered into it and said, yes, we, we're partnering, we agree to make the appointments, um, and they have to be, you know, local citizens, so.
So with this, with this money that's in this fund or whatever, is this like a typical, or like, not typical, but is this like, or,
Yeah, that's.
like if we got ten thousand dollars from this fund or whatever, is this like a, city's gotta match up to a certain amount, or is this just free money?
It's available to use. Nope. Yeah, it's just money that was fundraised for Swisher.
For the beautification.
Beautification, which is a pretty.
How was it fundraised?
They used to do, I think Mary was saying they did stuff at Fun Days, asking for money, they would do things around town.
I, I noticed when I would kinda flip through the flyer, they sent out several different mailings. Like a lot of different newsletters and mailings, and there were levels of sponsorship or donation or endowment or, that's what I got just a little bit, I don't know all of the ins and outs of it, wasn't prepared to answer.
Motion to approve resolution forty-five, twenty twenty-four.
Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Klein.
Yes.
Keenick.
Yes.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Yep. Thanks, Mary. Uh, resolution forty-six of twenty twenty-four, approving payout number three from Dave Schmitz for the sewer project. Someone wanna motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All right, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Keenick.
Yes.
Pujo. Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Yep.
Question for you on this. I see phase one and phase two is a substantial completion of November fifteenth. Based on track for that.
Yes, they are. Phase two is all the way up to Howard.
Yeah, so what this, those guys, is phase three is, correct me if I'm wrong, but just third.
Yeah.
Going down, so everything, all the work, new paving, everything will be done by November fifteenth of this year. So Howard, yes, Howard will be done. By this, and then they have startup shall begin April first, one that way. And they have August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five to finish all third in the project, will be completed by that.
And any other touch-ups and repairs?
I got a quick question, that's kinda regarding that, but, um, you know, like, behind Charlie G's barn there, you know, the creek that runs through there, is that no longer gonna be a creek? That's, that's gonna be all flat, that's.
That's a culvert.
That's, that's the big culvert, the one, they go, okay, that's what I was, I was just making sure.
They'll grade that.
To be flat.
Cause I, I think sidewalk goes on that side.
Yeah. Have you updated Sonia or Fun Days stuff, cause she knows which streets will be open and closed at the end of the month?
Not. We've talked about it, yeah, we talked about it at our stairs.
We'll go tomorrow. Wednesday.
Oh, we just wanna make sure she's ready. Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution forty-seven of twenty twenty-four, approving change order number two for seven thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-two cents for seeing the sanitary sewer project contract with Dave Schmidt construction to three million five hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion to approve resolution forty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you guys know what this is for? Or what it's for? Mostly on experience.
Yeah, so, um, biggest change was once we got in and de-watered the cul, existing culvert under second, we discovered that, A, there's RCP on the ends, there's CMP in the middle, and it rusted out in the bottom. And it had debris water in it previously, so we didn't know about that. So instead of leaving it as it is, we're replacing the entire culvert under second. So at the same time, we were removing water main at the third street bridge because we don't want that to be in the way when there's a future bridge project, so that would be flipped to a bridge project. Um, and then we also added on a savings for sewer encasement, where it was near the creek, along these four.
Questions for her? Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion to approve, can I please get a roll call? Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Keenick.
Aye.
Uh, ordinance six of twenty twenty-four, consideration of reading first ordinance, Mandine City Code Chapter one sixty-five point two-nine supplementary district recorded relations. This is the one she found was conflicting, so we're dropping it to twenty-five to make sure it matches. Someone want to motion?
Almost.
Yep.
This is put on as first reading.
This is first reading, motion put on as first reading.
Second.
Discussion? All right, can I get a roll call vote, please? Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Keenick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Uh, if council were so inclined, they could waive the other readings at this time.
Motion to waive the other readings.
Yep. Yep. Uh, discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please? Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Keenick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Uh, so do we need to, is waiting just waiting, or do we need to do a final reading?
I think you need to, I think you need to put it on its final.
Okay. I'm asking, it's been a while since we've done, yeah?
Sure.
You need to put it on its final.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to put on this final reading?
Motion, put it on its final.
Thanks, Mike. Adam? Uh, can I get a roll call vote, please? Klein.
Aye.
Keenick.
Aye.
Pujo.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Perfect. And that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Did you just say? It is seven thirty-two PM, yeah. You're funny, Mike.